Good evening, everyone. We'd like to call the order of the City of Joliet Record and City Council Meeting.
There we go, okay.
Tuesday, September sixteenth, two thousand fourteen. Honorable Mayor Thomas Giurani presiding. We have invitation this evening by Father Chris Grove of the Saint Mary Magdalene Catholic Church at one twenty-seven South Brick Street, after which he will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Let us pray. Oh God, you generously bestow your gifts in abundance. We are most grateful for all that you continue to do for us and for the many favors that you grant. As we gather in your name, come to us and enlighten us. May everything that we do be in your inspiration and wisdom. God of wisdom and justice, through you all authority is administered, laws are enacted, and judgments are decreed. Guide and support our mayor, the members of our city council, our city manager, and our city staff. Give us the strength to know your will so that all decisions may be pleasing to you. May their work be conducted with righteousness, and may they always promote what is for the good and welfare of the citizens of Joliet. We likewise this evening commend to your care all the residents of the city of Joliet, that they too may be blessed and sanctified. Together may we all work for the betterment of our community and enjoy the blessings you promised to those who remain faithful to you. We pray to you, our one Lord and God, forever and ever. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with roll call, Mayor Giurani.
Here.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Here.
Councilman Girl.
Here.
Councilman Hug.
Here.
Councilman McFarland.
Here.
Councilman Morris.
Here.
Councilman Otterkirk.
Here.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Here.
Councilman Turk.
Here.
Next, we have approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as written with the following changes? Remove council memo number four-six-four dash fourteen, transfer of a Class B liquor license, bottoms up, and move up the proclamation following the committee reports, and council memo number four-six-five dash fourteen, following the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Otterkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Mayor Giurani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Um, next we have, um, appointment of Mayor Pro Tem. It is recommended Councilman Otterkirk be appointed as Mayor Pro Tem for the term ten-one-fourteen through twelve thirty-one-fourteen.
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Otterkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Mayor Giurani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council committee reports, Finance Committee.
The committee, uh, the Finance Committee met this evening at five-thirty. Uh, Councilman Hug was there, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Gavin was there, and myself to review the, um, let me get the right agenda up here. To review the, uh, natural gas reverse auction that's going to take place on, uh, October sixth that we've been doing the last couple of years, adopting a bond record-keeping policy. We had an ADP payroll update. Um, they have been, uh, running dual systems for the last couple of weeks to see, uh, what bugs need to be worked out. The, um, October, I think it was eighth as again payroll, tenth, October tenth payroll, uh, it should be, the, the goal is to get it up and running on October tenth. Um, reviewed the personnel summary, conference travel, seminar expense, treasure dispersments, regular claims, uh, found them all to be in order and recommend their approval. Do you have anything, Larry, to add?
That's fine.
That's it.
Pauline.
And next is land use and Legislative Committee report.
Yes, uh, Land Use Legislative Committee, we met on, uh, Wednesday, September the tenth, uh, in the, uh, planning room at, at three P M. Uh, myself, Councilman McFarland, Councilwoman Gavin was present. Uh, we started with the, uh, actually a presentation or update from, uh, Will County, uh, Ms. Marty, from the Will County concerning the electronic recycling, uh, and she, uh, went through some, uh, information determining how, uh, we can proceed with getting the, uh, recycles off the curves and out of the alleys and things of that nature, uh, working with the county. Uh, she left with some literature and also information on some, uh, other sites that, uh, around the area that can be, uh, for the residents to, uh, drop off the electronics for recycling. Well, we also had discussed the auto salvage proposal for the New Lennox Road, but that has been pulled from the agenda, so I won't bore you all with that, since we won't be doing any action on that. Uh, I asked Council, uh, Councilman, well, let me do this one more. Uh, Councilman McFarland is gonna help me out here, 'cause he had, uh, kinda brought a few gen items to the agenda, so he can probably discuss them a little more thorough than I can. But one, uh, we will be, uh, we approved to come to the full council, uh, I believe some of the, uh, uh, what, um, I should probably let him do this one too, yeah. Uh, the, the handicap, we raised the, uh, the fine for handicap parking. I guess some of the organizations here in the city, I believe, met with the mayor, as well as Councilman McFarland, asking about the fine for parking in handicap parking space. So the, uh, Land Use Legislative Committee has moved to come to the full council to raise the fine from two-hundred-and-fifty to five-hundred dollars. Uh, I'm gonna skip and go down, Jim, and then I'll let you finish at the end. Uh, Councilwoman, uh, your name slipped my mind.
Just Jan.
Jan.
(laughing).
I would remember that. Jan, uh, had brought to our attention about the banners, so staff, the, uh, what do you call it, the flag advertising banners, uh, staff is going to, uh, there's an ordinance in place, but they're gonna rework it, I guess, as a, uh, old ordinance, so they'll be bringing that before the council to give it an update, uh, for the banners that's in the parkways and so, and different areas of the city, to kinda, uh, get a, uh, a grasp on that, so it won't be so, uh, uh, blocking view for, uh, coming out of driveways or, or onto the main streets and causing, uh, uh, accidents of that nature. So staff will be coming back with some type of, uh, rewording the ordinance for the advertising signs and banners. And Jim, I believe you can take it away.
Just a couple, couple items. One of the, uh, issues that we discussed that predominantly affects three major areas in the city that have come to us and from meetings that I've attended in neighborhoods is around the University of Saint Francis area, Saint Pat's, and the Reed's Wood area. When the council changed the ordinance of removing all vehicles, uh, from the streets when there's over two inches of snore or more, um, while it works in many of our neighborhoods, it evidently is not working in three of these areas. So, uh, we've asked staff to come back with a recommendation of how we could, uh, tweak the ordinance for certain areas, much like the council did with the garbage removal, when the council decided to take and make all the garbage pickup street side, curb side. Uh, the council did go back and identify certain neighborhoods where garbage is still being picked up from the alley. So staff is gonna identify with some of the council members in different districts of what areas could we tweak the ordinance to allow possibly for on-street parking, uh, almost like the watering ordinance on odd-even days if it snows, so all the cars park on the left side or right side, so you could still get a, a plow through. Uh, also, it was brought up from, I forgot, uh, one of us is potentially even maybe doing it on a time schedule, so, so maybe from eight in the morning until noon, uh, folks can, uh, have to be totally off the streets, and it opens it up later on in the evening for the plows and the get-through, so folks can get home. Um, so we're working on that ordinance. Uh, the other thing, and we discussed, I remember, at public service about actually plowing the alleys, and it came, uh, back from public service that that was something that we could possibly do, uh, because of the equipment. Uh, so we're looking at an alternative. The other issue that we discussed, um, and this is something that's been ongoing, uh, through our Diversity and Community Relations Committee, is how do we maintain local businesses in Joliet and giving, uh, folks in our community contracts that the city's doling out? We dolen out millions of dollars in contracts, and how do we keep these contracts local? So, uh, we took a, uh, a look at one of our neighboring communities, which is the Village of Tinley Park, and looked at a local purchasing ordinance, uh, and we asked staff to come up with some type of, uh, uh, suggestion to the, uh, council of setting up, uh, percentages that potentially allow for us to take contracts at the cities doling out and making sure that there's preference to businesses that are registered in Joliet, but that are from the Joliet, Will County, and Kendall County area. So, uh, there was a review of that, and hopefully that, uh, comes up in the next few months. Lastly, is, um, is, was mentioned here, I think a month ago, about the job descriptions for the council members. I know the resident that brought that forth from Cunningham was at the meeting, and, uh, our Corporation Council, uh, said that we will have something before the council, before he retires, uh, to kinda outline our, our duties, and, uh, I forgot what else he wanted in that, that, that the council agreed to remand back to us, but I believe Jeff and the mayor met with this individual, and something's being compromised.
I have a question.
Sure.
Will attendance be in that job description?
That's...
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that's part of the philosophical discussion behind the, uh, the subject. Um, certainly attendance is expected of all elected officials. I don't believe that we have the authority to mandate attendance to the point of, uh, requiring removal from office, should it, an elected official, uh, not be able to make the meetings. That's really up to the voters, that's beyond our authority. Uh, the Illinois Municipal Code establishes the requirements for office and the requirements for removal, and we, we are held to that standard, even though we're home rule. Uh, that's not to say having statements in our code about what's expected would be meaningless. It certainly is a standard that, uh, everyone could look to, to, to evaluate how appointed and elected officials, uh, perform their official duties.
I just ask that because I know that's a question that's gonna be asked, so, thank you.
Next is Public Service Committee report.
We are the Public Service Committee comprised of Councilman, um, Councilman McFarland and, uh, Councilwoman Gavin, met yesterday afternoon at four forty-five here at City Hall to review the contracts, um, ordinances, resolutions, change orders, and so forth, found them all to be in order, recommend their approval. We also had two reports. One report was on the smoke testing of the, uh, sanitary and storm sewer, uh, combination. Uh, twenty-two letters were sent out, or twenty, I think it was twenty-two letters were sent out this week to, uh, individuals who were in violation. They may not even know they're in violation till they get the letter, asking them to voluntarily comply with, uh, with, uh, separating the storm water and the sanitary sewer. We also received, and you should have a copy of this in your mailboxes, uh, the status update on the fire hydrant flushing schedule. Um, we, uh, they broke it down into run areas, uh, by stations, and, um, station area, the station run area for, uh, Station One is complete, Six is complete, Seven is complete, and Nine is complete. Uh, Station Area Three and Eight are in progress. Uh, Station Four and Five, their area will be done, uh, in October of this year, and Station Ten, uh, will be done in spring of fifteen. Um, so far, what they've, uh, the, the total number of hydrants in the, in the nine run areas are three thousand two hundred and ninety-four, with, with three-point-two percent being out of service, so a hundred and five. And there are some operational but needs repair, so, um, the, and it's kinda typical in the areas that you go through, the run areas, um, stations, uh, in the newer areas of the city, uh, like Station, uh, Eight, Nine, and Ten, uh, are, are very low. Uh, the central area of the city is, uh, higher, uh, Station, uh, Four, Five, Six, and Seven is higher. So, it's a good report, and, um, you should all have a copy in your boxes.
Show no other reports. Next is the proclamation for Take Back the Night. Mayor Ronnie Horn is here to accept the proclamation.
All right. Proclamation. Whereas women and men of all ages are invited to take a stand against sexual violence at the Eighteenth Annual Will County Take Back the Night March Vigil and Rally on October second, twenty-fourteen at five-thirty P M. at A T I Field at Joliet Memorial Stadium. Take Back the Night offers an opportunity for survivors of abuse to join with others of all races, cultures, backgrounds, and experiences, to combine the strength of their voices to declare an end to violence. This year, featured speakers are Sherry Anisich, did I get that right? Okay. And Kelly Stryker. Sherry's daughter, Alicia Bromfield, and her unborn granddaughter, Ava, were murdered in Door County, Wisconsin. Sherry and Kelly were strong forces in changing Wisconsin's law that had allowed defendants to use voluntary intoxication as a defense. Take Back the Night began in Europe in nineteen-seventy-six and has continued throughout the world as a sign of empowerment for women, men, and children. For the past eighteen years, Will County Take Back the Night has hosted an annual rally to raise awareness about sexual violence and to support survivors in their healing. Will County Take Back the Night also raises funds for local agencies which assist women and their families. Now therefore I, Thomas Giurani, Mayor of the City of Joliet, Illinois, on behalf of the Joliet City Council, do hereby recognize the efforts and dedication of those involved in the cause against sexual violence. And is signed by Tom Giurani, September sixteenth, twenty-fourteen. Thank you, Mayor. Um, this is our Eighteenth Annual Take Back the Night Rally, and at this time, I would like to ask each of you to take a moment for silence for our most recent Will County victim. Uh, her name is Jocelyn Woods. She's twenty years old. She was born and raised in Joliet, and, uh, this happened on September third. So if we could all take a moment for silence, please? Thank you. Although we have all been made aware of domestic violence, especially recently on the television with the episodes with some athletes, um, there are some facts that I would like you to know, and one of them is that one in four women experienced domestic violence during their lifetime, including physical assault or rape. However, it's not just the women and the victims that suffer. Every year, more than three million children witness domestic violence in their homes. Without the help, without help, girls who witness domestic violence are more vulnerable to abuses teens and adults, and without help, boys who witness domestic violence are far more likely to become abusers as partners and as parents. And that continues the cycle of domestic violence within our community. You know, according to the, uh, United States Department of Housing and Urban, um, Department of U.S. Housing and Urban Development, domestic violence is the third-leading cause of homelessness for families. Now, there's one fact that we all need to realize, and that most domestic violence cases are not even reported, so most cases go untold. So this is statistics on the fact that, of those that we know, and I appreciate you coming out. We will have a table for sign-ins for, um, our leaders in the community, and you will be recognized for being there. Thank you.[1240.48][1240.48](applause). Ronnie, Beth, I know you worked very hard at this, and Beth, do you wanna say something?
I don't really.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you for all your hard work. We just look forward to seeing all of you there.
Thanks.
Next is council memo, memo number four-sixty-five dash fourteen, which is a transfer of a Class B liquor license at three-three-four-zero Mall Loop Dry, T G I Fridays. It is recommended T G I Fridays be issued a Class B liquor license. So moved.
Second. Pauline.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Uh, Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Otterkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Mayor Giurani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next is the consent agenda. Um, first is approval of minutes. It is recommended the minutes of the combined council meeting held on September second, twenty-fourteen stand approved as recorded. Council memo number four-three-four dash fourteen, regular payroll for July twenty-fifth through August seventh, twenty-fourteen, three million, one hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and four cents. Council memo number four-three-five dash fourteen, regular payroll for August eighth through August twenty-first, twenty-fourteen, three million, fifty thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-eight cents. It is recommended said regular payrolls be approved. Treasures dispersments for August twenty-fourteen, seventeen million, seven hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars and twenty cents. Regular claims, August twenty-fourteen, one million, nine hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and one cents. Treasures reports for July twenty-fourteen, it is recommended the treasures dispersments, regular claims, and treasures report be received and placed on file. Council memo number four-three-six dash fourteen, authorization for World Energy Solutions, Inc. to conduct a natural gas reserve auction. It is recommended the city manager be authorized to accept the lowest responsible bid offered via a reverse auction conducted by World Energy Solutions. Council memo number four-three-seven dash fourteen, position vacancies. It is recommended the city manager be authorized to fill one police patrol officer position and subsequent vacancies for the Corporation Council and accounting manager positions if filled internally. It is recommended said consent agenda items be approved.
So moved. Second.
Any questions?
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Otterkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye, except those pertaining to my employer.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Mayor Giurani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Public hearing. Council memo number four-three-nine dash fourteen, amendment to the annexation agreement allowing medical cannabis cultivation facility at twenty-eight-hundred Switzer Road. This includes a resolution approving an amendment to the annexation agreement and an ordinance approving a special use permit to allow a medical cannabis cultivation facility located at twenty-eight Switzer Road. It is recommended said resolution and ordinance be adopted.
So moved. Second.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
This is a public hearing. Yes, I know. I was gonna say, do you want to add anything to your presentation?
I have a question. Uh, in case the, um, I'm sorry, Silvia Mike is with permanent chief ordinance here on behalf of my client, clients, um, advocate here. If the council had any questions, we are here, present, more than happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
I do for council. We received the, uh, annexation agreements this morning at nine-twenty-nine A M., and I believe in your email you said that these may be the final forms, but you cannot rule any last-minute changes. Is there anything that's...
I received no request for any changes, so those drafts, uh, which went out last week to council for, uh, the petitioners, uh, are in final form.
And then, could you just explain why staff's recommendation for the two-year, um, delay in the water and sewer connection fees?
I, I can. I believe the city manager, uh, has previously discussed this with the council and perhaps with Land Use Committee. Uh, there was some discussion early on about whether or not to incentivize or to somehow entertain, uh, partnerships or other relationships with one or more of these facilities, and I believe the consensus that emerged from that discussion is that, uh, it was not necessary to substantially incentivize these facilities or to request that we have some other economic relationship with the cultivation centers. Uh, but, uh, these are unique facilities in that they will incur substantial development costs and startup costs, and really not have an opportunity to start generating revenues at that site. And so, in an effort to help a little with their startup costs, uh, the manager thought it was appropriate to delay, uh, the payment of water and sewer connection fees. Not a lot of money, it's a little bit of help. Uh, we will, over the next two years, should one or more of these, well, it'll only be one facility, uh, maximum be approved, we will get that fee. It would just be deferred for up to two years.
Thanks for the clarification, 'cause, uh, what came through land use was about us actually waiving the fees, uh, in the partnerships. I was just wondering what the compromise was, and evidently it's this.
This is a public hearing? Anybody would want to address this?
Mayor.
No, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I have a question. Whenever.
No, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I have a question, Jeff. Once the, the process, um, you know, once the process kinda goes, goes, uh, downstate, there's a selection made, and, uh, you know, let's say we're for, I'm sure there's, there's areas in District Five, other areas that are, you know, that are, that are gonna be trying to get a cultivation center, 'cause I believe there's only one in District Five.
There's only one in the three-county area.
Three-county area. Uh, if we are, if, if we are selected, would it be at that point in time, would there be some type of license agreement that the city would enter into with the firm that is selected downstate, and then there would be, I assume we'd negotiate a fee of some sort on behalf of the city? Is that how the process would work?
No, that's not...
Okay.
...how the process works. Really, the licensing is completely done at the state level.
Okay.
How the facilities operate, how they're inspected, uh, how their entire business arrangement is, is handled by the government is at the state level. The only, and essentially all local, uh, authority was preempted by the acts that allow, uh, for these types of facilities, uh, pretty much with the exception of zoning. And so, communities are allowed to, uh, accept these facilities and to modify their zoning ordinance to provide for land use regulation, but not really operational regulation.
So basically, the benefit coming to this, to the city is gonna be, obviously, the property taxes, the jobs that are generated from, from this facility, should we be selected? Yes. Thank you.
Uh, somebody wanted to address this? Yes. Step up to the microphone, please.
Uh, my name is Judy Kreiser. I live at two-three-six-five-six Vetta Road, just on the way around the corner from this facility where it'd be at. Uh, the people to start with on our road are really upset they didn't hear about this whole thing. Uh, we, uh, read it in the newspaper yesterday. No, no notice to the people that living around there, uh, you know, no notification. They figure, oh, well, we don't have to within a few, uh, few hundred feet of the facility, that's all we have to notify. Excuse me, we're gonna be their neighbors. They should've notified us. We're really upset about the whole thing. Um, with the other facilities available, there shouldn't be a need for this project except for somebody's profit. They have enough facilities in Colorado alone, they have three hundred in, in Denver, Colorado. Um, they, they're supposed to be, uh, a setback zone to the nearest homes, um, and, uh, to the, to the schools, but right across the street you have the, um, paintball place where a lot of people come in with their kids and stuff. Um, you know, I mean, if you have to set it back from a school and, and a hospital and residential, uh, you know, it's... you know, it's right across the street. Excuse me. Two, I don't know how often this is going to be inspected. Who's going to be, who's going to do the inspection? Are they going to, you know, monitor themselves? In Denver, Colorado, where they have the facilities, the biggest thing was the smell. Even with the charcoal filters that they have, they've done inspections and it said that it was below limits, which means it could be a little below, but it's not detectable, which means it still could be smelling. Let's see. Let's, excuse me, I'm just, I just went through the, this is short, no notice for me, so. Okay, there's not a shortage of facilities, so I don't think that this facility needs to be there, especially what Center Point wants to put in another one just down the road. And.
If I may.
No federal law, there's no federal law that permits these facilities. In fact, they're coming out of the woodwork, and my belief is that, okay, let's put a whole bunch of them out there, even this facility. And if the government comes in and closes them down, well, they have another one back to go to.
If I may, there'll only be one. Only one of them will get the license to do it. Either one of them, not both of them.
Yes, I know, but either one.
Yes.
Okay, I'm worried about the, you know, nobody's mentioned about who's going to do the inspections. Is it going to be the health department? Are they going to govern themselves? That's something else. You know, and two, with the truck traffic, how much, how many trucks are coming in? Are they going to be dispensing the marijuana there? Is their facility there that they could do it, dispensing right there on the spot? You know, like I said, the neighbors don't even know about this. You know, there was no warning, no notice to the people that living around there, which there should have been. You know, and the neighbors are upset about it. You know, and if they're just, if they're not going to go beyond the regulations that the city has, then what makes you think that they're going to go beyond regulations if there's something that's going to go wrong? They're going to put it back on you. Well, the city approved this, there's problems, but the city's approved it anyway, so there's nothing that we can do about it. You take them to court. And that's not fair neither.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Anybody else? Sure.
I'm Kathy Garthas. I live on 236, 23656 Vetter Road. And my concerns is the noise from these exhaust fans.
Speak into the microphone, please.
Sorry, Tom. The noise from the exhaust fans, how much noise level is that supposed to accumulate? You know, we're going to be hearing vacuuming sounds and fans running all night when we're trying to sleep. And the lights, how much lighting is it going to be at night? You know, we got, the intermole yards are lighting up the neighborhood like it is. I mean, do we need more lights down the road lighting it up so when we want to sleep, we can't even sleep because we are, all this light coming in our windows? And the smell, I mean, when you guys, when people walk in and out of that facility, doors are open, you know, despite the ventilation you guys may have, when doors are open, the smell's going to come out. You know, and you guys say that you guys, there's no smell. Well, like anything in the world, that people get used to the smells. Like people who smoke cigarettes don't know they stink because they're used to the smell. People who have pets, they don't know that their pets smell because they're used to it. But somebody else in a clean environment will know. They could smell it. Need a smell of marijuana? Go to the stores, and I know that people come up, come to the stores, and I could tell they got marijuana on them or in their car or in their house because the smell is so strong on them. I get lightheaded. I lose my breath. I have a hard time breathing. I get sick to my stomach with the smell of pot marijuana or cannabis, whatever you want to call it. And I live down the street, and they're going to put these things there? I don't think so. This is a health hazard to me. I got, I'm a disability here. I just can't have this down there. And then not to mention, you know, these guys are coming from Colorado to this state, and, you know, the crime waves in Colorado, I guarantee you, are not like the crime waves we have here in Illinois, especially Chicago and within the Joliet area here. There are things, there's a big gang group. Everybody should be familiar with them called the Latin Kings Gang. There, lots of their people are in downtown Joliet just east of here is really a hotspot where a lot of the Latin Kings gangs are, gang members are. I can't imagine the crime wave that these gangs are going to be drawing. You think these Latin King people ain't going to be wanting to come over here to this place and try, these places and try robbing it? I don't care what security you have. We'll be having these people sitting down our roads, or even coming down our roads, even trying to kill us, for God's sake, just because they want to try to get a hold of some of that pot over there. And I am worried to death about that. You know, what if we go up in our barn one night and there's somebody in our barn, and boom, they end up knocking us off because they're hiding out there, waiting for the nighttime to fall for them to do their move on this place at night, or any time of day. And I talked to Senator Pat McGuire this morning, and he does not endorse this because federally, on a federal level, this cannabis marijuana pot is still illegal.
Thank you.
Pat McGuire called me this morning and told me that.
Thank you.
So I hope and pray you guys can think about the people who still live here.
Was there, I'm remember, was there a motion?
There was a motion.
Second.
Yes.
Councilman Morris.
Man, could they address some of their concerns about the?
They can, but that was, they were here less than, that was all addressed, if you want to address your, the concerns about the.
If they didn't mind.
About the security and the trucks and so forth and so on.
The ventilation.
Yes.
And how far is it from the residence, Jeff? I mean.
Under state law, Your Honor, cultivation centers have to be at least 2,500 feet from a residential zoning district.
From a residential zoning district, I believe that the homes on Vetter are zoned A1, which is agriculturally zoned.
Thank you. Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Do you want to address some of their concerns?
Of course. Daniel Lemmons, Mr. Mayor and the council. They did bring up a lot of concerns, so I'm going to try to remember everything that they went down, but I guess the smell, again, we've come up with a proprietary system, so you can drive around our facility in Connecticut. There is a elementary school about 1,200 feet from our facility in Connecticut, and unless you know it's there, you would not smell it. The doors, when you open and close the doors, the smell does not come in and out. Everything is compartmentalized, so it's our offices in the front. So everybody changes, and then by the time they get out, there's ionizers and there's not a smell that comes through.
Fans.
Pardon me. The fans, yes. The fans in the HVAC system sound just like any HVAC system that's on any building anywhere in the United States. Sound just like the HVAC system on the top of this building.
Lights.
Lights. The building itself is completely enclosed. We don't want any light getting in or getting out. So the only lights that you would see from the street are the lights in the offices, just normal office lights, the grow room lights. You would never see them from the outside.
Security and trucks.
Security and trucks. Again, security, chain link fences. The new count on our building at full capacity, I believe, is 237 cameras, as well as 24-hour security guards. It's going to be like, you know, breaking into Fort Knox, essentially. And then, I'm sorry, what was the other?
Trucks.
Trucks. Trucks. We may get one or two deliveries of things that we need for growing a week. Generally, they come in small trucks. I'd say at the most, two to three semi-deliveries to our building a month. The rest of it, any deliveries going out to the dispensaries would be done in an armored car service that would come a couple of times a week. And I guess the other question that just reminded me of, we will not be dispensing anything from that facility. Just completely wholesale.
I think you addressed everything. Thank you.
Mayor, there was one more, because you guys did good. And, correct me if I'm wrong, your facility in Connecticut, or one in Colorado that the woman had mentioned, can't sell to Illinois. It's got to be Illinois grower, Illinois dispensary.
Correct. It does not cross state lines.
Okay, thank you. Yes. Step up here, we can't hear you.
Who's going to inspect it?
Who's going to inspect it? Okay.
It'll be the Department of Agriculture who will be inspecting the facility, as well as the state police. Will have 24-hour access to all of our cameras at the facility, so they could be inspecting our facility at any given moment, and we wouldn't even know. So they will have access to every single camera in the building at any time.
Thank you.
Councilman Morris.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. I vote aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Mayor Jerrani.
Aye.
Good luck to both of yous. Good luck.
Council memo number 440-14, approving the annexation of 11.5 acres located at 23224 Center Point Way. This includes a resolution approving the annexation agreement, an ordinance approving the annexation, an ordinance approving the classification of the 11.5 acres to I-1 zoning, and an ordinance approving a special use permit to allow a medical cannabis cultivation center located at 23224 Center Point Way. It is recommended said resolution and ordinances be adopted.
Jeff, I believe you suggested if this annexation is contingent on them getting the license, and if they don't, then it's up to the owner of the property whether or not they want to annex.
Actually, the annexation will go forward. We'll have an annexation agreement, and in annexation, the property will come in. But the property owner has requested an opportunity that in the event the developers do not buy her property, that she then be given a window of time, about six months in duration, to file a petition for disconnection. So even if this development is not licensed, the property could still be sold. It's across from the Intermodal Gate. It's a high-value piece of property and would be useful to somebody. So there's a potential. It may come out.
Okay. Sir, do we, anybody have any questions for this gentleman? Anybody want to address this one? Yes, Mike.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mike Hansen here, a local attorney, representing here Audubon Country Club. I'd just like to make the brief comment to the mayor and the council that we have reached an agreement with the property owners. As you know, we have our property to the south, I should say, the contract purchasers, in which we'll enter into a side agreement to the fact that there will be a 50-foot buffer on this prospective property in the event that they obtain a license, in which the trees will be maintained. No development will occur within the 50 feet, and that maintains our earlier agreement with Center Point, which there was going to be a 100-foot buffer. So we're happy with that. We'll get that taken care of, and just want to let the council and the mayor know about that agreement. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sir, a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Mayor Jerrani.
Aye. Good luck.
Carried. Council memo number 441-14, ordinance approving the 1415 Plainfield Road Business District Plan and establishing the 1415 Plainfield Road Business District in a resolution approving an economic development agreement with Mickey Oil Company. Said ordinance and resolution are provided for council's consideration.
Jeff?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, based on yesterday's extensive pre-council discussion, I was asked to resume discussions with Mr. McCuska and his attorney regarding potential changes to the agreement that everybody might find acceptable. Those discussions took place this afternoon. I want to thank Mike Hansen for his availability today, because he had a lot going on. And we do have some movement in what was previously presented to the council, not as a manager recommendation, but as a potential agreement. I do not represent to the council that staff fully supports it, or that every member of the council will support it either, but I thought, based on Mr. Hansen's good faith this afternoon, I would summarize the current position of the parties. And essentially, where this agreement started was that there would be a nine-year term. And during the course of that term, there would be some assurances to the city that the incentives would not be at a net cost to the city, that the city would still continue to receive the level of business taxes that it currently enjoys from Mr. McCuska's investment in the community. And we call that a benchmark. And essentially, the agreement would provide that over the nine-year period, there'd be some periodic review of the business performance to make sure that the taxes generated by the property equaled or exceeded the benchmark. And the points of disagreement, if I can call it disagreement, were how often that periodic review would occur? Would it be every three years? Would it be every year? And what would happen if the property underperformed in some way? And the discussion there was whether or not the council would have a right to terminate the agreement in open session by a simple majority vote? Would that be an annual opportunity? Or would there be some other process if the property failed to perform in the way we all expect in a number of consecutive years? And should that occur, even though we don't think that would occur, would there be some easier process to terminate the agreement? And so what Mr. Hansen and I, and I presume Mr. McCuska was fully informed, I did not have an opportunity to discuss this with the city council in any detail. I tried to get an email out before the meeting and just ran out of time. But essentially, the arrangement that Mr. Hansen and I came to today was that there would be a nine-year term. During the first three years of that term, the business would receive the incentive, and that incentive is a reduction in the city's sales tax. In exchange for that reduction in city's sales tax, the business would pay a higher sales tax for inside sales as opposed to outdoor or outside motor fuel sales. And it's an ability to try to contain costs. So for the first three years of this nine-year arrangement, the incentives would flow to the business. At the end of that three-year period, after we know what the third calendar year performance is, and again, we get that information from the state, so there's a lag period, but there'd be a review. And that would occur in the first three or four months of the fourth year. And if the city determined that there was underperformance, that the business did not hit the benchmark, the city council could then vote here in this room to terminate the agreement. And then every year thereafter, until the ninth year is completed, the city would continue to have this annual review opportunity from years three to the end of the agreement after nine years, to terminate the agreement if the benchmark is not accomplished, if it isn't met. One additional safeguard for the city would be after six years, beginning with the seventh year, if the business doesn't hit the benchmark for two consecutive years, at that point, a city council vote would not be required, and that a notice to terminate could be issued administratively. Of course, the business would always have the opportunity to petition the council for some different outcome. That's essentially it. So you have a nine-year agreement. The first three, the incentives would flow, and then the annual review process involving a city council vote would then occur on an annual basis for the remainder of the nine-year period, for six of those nine years. And then in the last three years, you'd put on top of that council review an administrative process if you had repeat underperformance relative to the benchmark. That's it in a nutshell. There's been a couple of smaller issues that are not quite economic. One is, Mike and I would need to work on what's called a force majeure clause if there is some act of God or major casualty loss at the property, like a fire, that that would be taken into consideration. There's also been discussion raised by Ms. Quillman, Councilwoman Quillman, that the incentive would be terminated upon conveyance of the business. It's my understanding that was acceptable, at least it was at five o'clock or so. So that's what I'm reporting to the council, as changes that the parties have tried to accomplish in a whole have tried to accomplish in a hope to reach some global compromise.
Questions?
So essentially, should at some point during the agreement Mickey's oils wanted to sell, they would probably be best advised to take the potential buyer on a, on a preliminary agreement and meet before the council, make up a presentation to see if they can get the same deal or an extension because it won't be automatic.
That's right. It would not be automatic. It would not be prohibited, of course, but it would not be automatic.
And from the legal aspect of the city, you're happy with this?
Well, I am trying to accommodate your wishes, not mine. The administration doesn't recommend this, but, you know, there are pros and cons, obviously, to this sort of agreement. And this is about as far as I could move the ball today.
Any other questions?
I could just address the council very quickly on behalf of my client, Mr. McCuska. I think that what we experienced here this afternoon, it was referred to as a compromise, but this essentially, in my opinion, and Mr. McCuska has agreed, this not only, the city council has not only recognized the fact that this is a business, really the loan business in the city of Joliet that has this particular issue, i.e. competition in this high-traffic-type industry, you know, the sale of gasoline with a competing municipality, while at the same time, we've come back and we recognize the desires and the expressions of city council concerning, you know, the importance of paying for our services and recognizing the tax revenue. If you want to call this a compromise, you can call it a compromise. I think it gets the job done and I think it's fair to both sides. And Jeff and I worked hard this afternoon to, to get to this particular level. And on behalf of my client, we would recommend the city council adopt this compromise and this agreement.
Councilman Morris, you have a question?
No.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded to adopt the ordinance and resolution. Councilwoman Quillman would be first.
Well, I've gone back and forth on this. And I've studied all the facts and, you know, I did ask for a compromise. I did, I feel it's a compromise, not selling the business to the next owner. They'd have to come before the city council. I know precedent was set back on Route 53. It was a little bit different situation, but... Explain it to me again, Mike. Jeff, please, about the, the review.
Again, the concern was to make sure that, as, as we all live with this agreement, that the city receives at least the same level of taxes that we currently receive from the property in exchange for these incentives. And the compromise would be that the incentives would be extended to the business for the first three years. So the city would be accepting a little bit of risk for the first three years, that the business would not generate the same level of return to the city because we are providing a lower sales tax, we're providing a sales tax rebate, which the business is going to try to make up in other ways, but we don't know if it will succeed. So the compromise was to give them the guarantee, the business guarantee that they have the first three years, and then the city's guarantee would be annual thereafter for the last six years of the agreement, that if the property did not generate the same level of taxes as it did in this year, that the city council by a simple vote could vote to terminate the agreement. And if they miss it twice in a year, beginning in the last three years, then there is no council vote required. That last little bit makes it probably more complicated than it needs to be, but it makes it easier for the city to terminate the agreement if it just isn't working out. And we've known that because of multiple years of not making the number.
And say, for example, okay, we've got three years here. And in another three years, the makeup of this council could change and folks in this council would rescind that sales tax. Then where are we?
If the sales tax were to be, and by that, let, I think what you're suggesting is an overall reduction in the level of city's sales tax, perhaps to the same level as another municipality, neighboring municipality, or the county. Staff had concerns about that and we had concerns about that with Route 53 and Lider Way Road. In both agreements, the parties agree that if there are changes in tax rates or state laws or some other event that changes that discrepancy between city business taxes and unincorporated business taxes, that the agreement would be amended based on whatever those changes are. So let's say the city's sales tax was reduced to the Crest Hill rate, which is why we're in this situation today. The city would have the ability to begin negotiations and discussions to terminate the agreement based on tax parity. Now, you need to understand that in exchange for no longer providing the rebate, the additional 1% business district tax that would be charged on convenience grocery items and alcoholic beverage items within the store, that would stop too. Right? It's, it's, it's a quid pro quo that in exchange for the lower sales tax on gasoline, there's a higher sales tax on inside items, inside the convenience store. So if there was tax parity and it was clear, the city would have the ability to stop the incentive but would lose the extra 1% sales tax. And that would have to be worked out through a process with the owner.
But if I could also add, it also goes the other way.
That's right.
So if Crest Hill lowered their sales tax, and I, I don't have the copy of the agreement or in front of me, but I, I believe you provided in the agreement, I think you provided some mechanism, so it's not just an agreement. It goes up or down depending on what may happen. You know what I'm saying?
The mechanism is meet and confer.
Okay.
It's too difficult to handle an infinite amount of variables that could occur with tax rates in the county and neighboring cities.
You know, everybody thinks that the city could lower their sales tax. Crest Hill could also lower their sales tax as well.
Right.
Which creates more of an imbalance, so.
The agreement is written to address a edge-of-town discrepancy in business taxes that we know about today. One of the issues that suggested a shorter term than the nine was the fact that you just don't know what's going to happen in the future. So if you have a three-year agreement, you don't have to know as much about the future because you'll be there in three years instead of nine. With a nine-year agreement, there's a little more uncertainty. There's no doubt about that. But that's where we ended up. And again, we'll, we'll have the benchmark and we'll have the ability to, at least after the first three years, make sure that the agreement is fair to the city.
Benchmark's in place for the, for the third year, not the first year?
The benchmark is established in 2014, but the incentives would flow for three years. So theoretically, you could have losses to the city in year one and year two and not in year three. And under that circumstance, the city would not have the ability to terminate the agreement because in year three, the business met the benchmark.
You're right. Soon she's done.
Well, I just think we're opening the door here. I... This came in at the, at the ninth hour, okay, this new agreement. And I really have not had time to really grasp it, except from what I've been telling here today. Um... There's been so many things on the table here. It was 10-5, and then 9-3, and then 1 and 2. And I'm going to take a gamble here and I'm going to go with Mr. McCuska and take you for your word. And I want to work really, really hard at this so that we're not here in three years and saying, "I told you so." So I think we have to help our businesses, businesses here in town, especially ones that have been here for 50 years, independent parties. And so I'm going to vote yes.
Councilman Turk?
Your Honor, you know, this is a tough decision, you know, because as Councilwoman, Councilwoman Quillman said, there's been a lot of items thrown out there and, and now this one here. You know, Mr. McCuska runs a great business. I'm one of his customers. I think he's got a great place there. But the concerns I have is, I don't have a problem with the nine years at all. I have a problem with the first three, you know, and, and my understanding, the finance committee a month ago, we talked about visiting it in year one every year and go, and extending it from there. Another concern is, is no staff recommendation. The staff is not recommending this and I have a concern with that. So respectfully, I'll have to vote no.
Councilwoman Gavin?
I too have a little concern, but I understand that if we are the three-year incentive. However, I would like to come back and review every year just to make sure that the city is being protected. But I also understand that you have a culture to have to change business practices as well. It is a little bit bitter, bittersweet on one thing. I know you've been in the community and I certainly think that you're going to do your best to, to try and change this practice. And, and you're up against a wall over there. I certainly understand that. So having said that, I, that three years are going to float by me pretty quick and we're going to be over there looking and to see how the city. So having said that, I vote aye.
Councilman Girl?
You know, my concerns aren't quite as great. I think that what we've done here is, I think, over the next nine years, I'm confident that I think the city's going to recognize some additional sales tax revenues. And I also think that we've provided a long-time business, 40-years, 50-year business in the community, to allow him to be more competitive with similar businesses in a neighboring community. So I really view this as a win-win for both the city and for the local business. So I vote aye.
Councilman Hug?
Spoke a lot yesterday. I'll keep it short. Jeff, thanks for the hard work. I understand it was a long session this afternoon. Mr. Hansen, thanks for your hard work. Mike, thanks for Mickey's commitment to Joliet in a very challenging situation. And I'm happy we can help out and I'm sure, you know, continue to help the city as you guys have for over 50 years. I vote aye.
Councilman McFarland?
I just have a quick question for, for council. The, the city gives facade grants for downtown. We did it sometime when we had revenues. Can you recall what the base dollar amount was for those facade grants?
No, I don't. I'm sorry. Maybe someone on staff can help me.
The facade grants?
The typical facade grant amount.
I think it capped out at $30,000. And just so you know, that was, by that extra tax that was charged to the downtown business owners, that was a tax that they paid to build up that pot of funds. And that was done through the city center partnership.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, I just want to echo some of what said yesterday. And Mr. McCuska, I want to thank you for coming to the city asking for assistance. Too many times I drive our city streets and businesses are closed. And you had the foresight as a business owner to come to us asking for assistance. And I can tell you, since you've come to us and it showed to the council that there is a need, that I make it a purpose to patronize your establishment there. I know it's a lot easier to go to Food for Less and, and get the, the discount there, but what you do and your quality salaries of your employees and your sponsorships to Little League baseball teams, and the only reason why I bring up the facade, if you notice, Mr. McCuska's invested some money into rehabbing the, the gas station there. And we discussed last month about the Clark Gas Station over on the corner of, I believe it's Center and Theodore Street. And I don't want that to happen to you. So with that being said, I vote aye.
Councilman Morris?
Yeah. Jeff, you had mentioned about the first two years, if he didn't do well, we couldn't do anything. But the third year, he can do well and we could terminate the contract. So, so the first two years, let's say he do well, and then the third year, he don't do well.
Right.
We can terminate the contract. That, this doesn't sound fair to me, I guess being in business. So, so the first two years, he could have a wonderful two years, and then the third year, the economy could go bad and he, he doesn't do as well, we're going to terminate the contract. Is that what we?
The way it's written is, the right to terminate is based on the performance in the prior 12 months. You could write it any way you'd like. You could have a three-year average if you'd like, but everybody kind of settled on this 12-month backward-looking measurement, trailing 12-month period, essentially a calendar year.
Or even he could do well for six years. And then you say after the sixth year, we're going to review it every year. Is that, did I?
Again, it, it would be based on how well did the business do in the, immediately preceding year. Yes.
Right.
If I could clarify that, Councilman, Jeff answered one part of the question correctly. It is the, the previous calendar year, number one. Number two, it's not an automatic termination. You know, recognizing your question from my client's point of view, two years he does well, the third year he doesn't do well, the council will have the opportunity to terminate the agreement. Because the council, when I, and you say he didn't do well, what you really mean to say is, the city didn't get the necessary amount of tax revenue. That's really what you're saying. The city council will then decide, you know, whether it wants to terminate the contract. It's not an automatic termination. So I think that accomplishes from both points of view, my clients as well as the cities, the council, whoever's on the council then and the mayor, will decide whether it wants to terminate the agreement based on a lot of factors, frankly, not only the revenue factors, but who knows what other factors may be in play at that time.
That's correct.
Thank you, Jeff. Thanks, Mike. I vote aye.
Councilman Oderkirk?
Thank you. I think the comments made by Councilman Girl and Councilman McFarland really reflect my own opinion. I won't repeat them. I think this is good business for Mickey Oil. I think it's good business for Joliet, and I vote aye.
Mayor Jerrani?
When we were first approached about this, I was against it. After meeting with Mike and Mike, and I told them that I wanted a fail-safe, so if in fact this didn't work, we were assured by Mr. McCuska that he thought this deal was going to increase the revenue the city was going to get. I hope that is the case. But I wanted to be able to review it in case that didn't happen and the city of Joliet would not lose revenue over this. Three years is, is a long time to wait. I hope it works, but I, I, I cannot support it based on putting the city at risk to, to lose revenue. So therefore, I vote no.
Motion carried. Next is ordinance...
Thank you very much.
Ordinances and resolutions. Under ordinances, council memo number 443-14, ordinance approving a special use permit to allow a U-Haul truck rental business with outside storage of up to four trucks at the existing gasoline service station located at 324 South Locken Avenue. It is recommended said ordinance be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor, if I could, there was an addendum circulated to the city council just to memorialize that there was a change requested yesterday regarding the six-foot fence to be installed immediately east of the parking area, all seven or eight spots. And that was acceptable to the owner. We checked with them today.
I'm sorry, was there a second?
I think so.
Second, okay. I'll leave.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin?
Aye.
Councilman Girl?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman McFarland?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman?
Aye.
Mayor Jerrani?
Aye.
Motion carried. Under resolutions, council memo number 445-14, resolution approving amendment number two to the agreement with Will County to provide water and sewer to the Ridgewood Service Area. It is said, it is said recommended resolution be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilwoman Gavin?
Aye.
Councilman Girl?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman McFarland?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk?
Aye.
Oh, pardon.
The roving voter.
Where's the pop guns?
Councilwoman Quillman?
Aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Mayor Jerrani?
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo number 446-14, a resolution accepting a permanent easement for public utilities from GLP, capital LLC. It is recommended said resolution be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilman Girl?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman McFarland?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman?
Aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin?
Aye.
Mayor Jerrani?
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo number 447-14, a resolution accepting a permanent easement for public utilities from the... It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council Memo Number 448-14, resolution accepting a permanent easement for public utilities from FR/CAL3 Empress Drive LLC. It is recommended said resolution be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
Pauline.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council Memo Number 449-14, resolution accepting a license agreement for public utilities from the Forest Preserve District of Will County. It is recommended said resolution be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
Pauline.
Motion carried. I'm sorry, seconded and, motioned and seconded, Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council Memo Number 449-14, a resolution accepting a license agreement for public utility, I'm sorry, I am reading the same one. Council Memo Number 450-14, a resolution approving a bond record-keeping policy. It is recommended said resolution be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. And I have, Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried.
I don't vote.
Bids and contracts.
One minute. It's okay.
Did I skip him?
Say yeah. Aye.
Sorry. Councilman Morris.
We've got to get out of here.
Bids and contracts, award of contracts. Council Memo Number 452-14, approve census, automatic metering, infrastructure, AMI agreement, and base station purchase. Council Memo Number 453-14, award a contract for the Bluff Street Interceptor Cleaning and Inspection Project. Council Memo Number 454-14, award a contract for the Summit Street, Bridge Street, Stone Street Storm Sewer Project 2014. Council Memo Number 455-14, approve the 2014-2015 rock salt purchase contract. Council Memo Number 456-14, purchase two Ford, four-by-Ford Explorers for the Utility Department. Council Memo Number 457-14, purchase a vehicle from the Tri-County Auto Theft Task Force. Council Memo Number 458-14, purchase 24 Panasonic Toughbook computers and accessories for the Fire Department. Council Memo Number 459-14, award a contract for the 2014 EAB tree replacement program. It is recommended Council Memos 452-14 through 459-14 be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Amendments, change orders, and payments. Council Memo Number 460-14, approve amendment number one to the Professional Services Agreement for the 2014 Sanitary Sewer Investigation and Rehabilitation Program. Council Memo Number 461-14, approve change order number one and payment request number five A for the 2014 City of Joliet by Two Minutes Patching Materials Contract. Council Memo Number 462-14, approve change order number one and payment request number three for the Country Club Villas Spencer Roadway Public Improvements Project 2014. It is recommended Council Memos 460-14 through 462-14 be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Let's see, we have licenses and permit applications. Council Memo 464-14 was pulled. Council Memo Number 465-14 was previously approved. So we have, the proclamation was previously presented, so we have Mayor Gerani appointments.
I do not have any this evening.
And next is the manager.
I don't have anything, thank you.
Or Corporation Council.
And I'm not the city manager.
Or Corporation Council comments. New business, not for final action or recommendation.
Any comments?
I have a question. Sure. Jeff, what's the city's policy? I was looking at the personnel summary. I noticed that we have some individuals that have been out on disability some four or five years. And I know that we've been talking about manpower and how we're down. What's our policy in trying to bring folks back into those positions, whether it's on a temporary basis hiring somebody? Specifically, I'm looking, you know, police, we're talking about. I know even in the public utilities, I know some folks have been out four or five years. What's our policy on?
Well, I can't comment on individual cases that might be pending in workers' compensation or some other forum, but our policy through HR and legal plays a role in this is to try to get the employee back to work and have them physically rehabilitated so that they're able to perform their duties, receive their salary, and not lose any position. Sometimes that takes a while. I wasn't aware of a case taking that long, but it does, in many cases, based on the severity of the injury, take some time for rehabilitation. Each union has different rules for what benefits need to be utilized by an employee before a decision could be made as far as that person being pensioned for being unable to return to duty. Some unions are very protective of that, and they have the ability to utilize sickly before they're forced to make a decision about their future. But our policy is to make a medical determination as soon as we can about the prospects for a full recovery, and if that's not possible, are there other jobs that might be available within our system? And then we work under the workers' compensation laws and the collective bargaining agreements to make a final decision. But it does take time in some cases. It's unavoidable.
So the city is doing their due diligence and trying to?
I believe so. And I know for years, HR has been very vigilant, both Vicky Calgans, when she was here in charge of that division, Mary Kucharz from my office, they're very knowledgeable and work well together on work hardening and other return-to-work procedures.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? No. Comments?
Yep. Mayor and council comments?
Mary?
No, sir. I have. Thank you, Mayor. About a week and a half ago was the Mexican Independence Day Parade on Collins Street. So I want to congratulate and thank the organizers and the sponsors of the parade. It was a wonderful day. It's a terrific turnout. All the young people that were there, they seemed to have a great time. I was fortunate enough to march with Lieutenant George Hernandez, who was a lieutenant of mine when I worked in the Police Department in Area 1 as I was a young policeman.